Okay, we've called an order of a special meeting of the City of Sulfur Springs City Council to be held at 6:00 PM Monday, September 16th, 2019, and the council will have two over one on Vegas. Would everyone please stand, pledge their allegiance and attention to the president?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your public, which stands, "One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all." On our Texas flag, our collective allegiance to the city of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Dear my father, thank you for bringing us here tonight again as we work together to make City of Sulfur Springs and keep the City of Sulfur Springs a great place to live. We thank you for the blessings that you bestowed upon us and upon our city, and we pray for your blessings to continue and your wisdom bestowed on us as we make decisions tonight. Be with us as we go home, be with our soldiers, be with our community, and just help us all to see that we are all better together, and working together is always better for your glory. In your name we pray, amen.
Okay. There is no action items on the agenda tonight. It's merely a workshop to discuss where we go from here with the city of Sulfur Springs. The square is beautiful, it's working great, lots of business is going, business going on down there. We have Pacific Park, it's going to be voted on here pretty soon. We have a senior citizens center involved in that as well. So we have things in the pipeline, but we don't have a comprehensive plan that we can sit down and look at and add to or work with. And that's one of the things that we have discussed that we would like to work on. It's everybody in Sulfur Springs City, and we're up here to work to make this a better town. Myself, I would like to see a lot of new houses and new additions here. We had eighty-something new kids through our district move into the school that I work at this year. That means that's eighty-four different families that have moved into Sulfur Springs. And I would like to turn the trend around of people moving out of county, I'd like for them to build in the city of Sulfur Springs, and we need to figure out a way to get that done. Mr. Maxwell?
So, the comprehensive plan is the vision document for the city. And it is typically the amalgamation of comments from the public, a one or more surveys, and lots of work from the city council and staff. In 1997, I believe it was, we put together a comprehensive plan, we called it the general plan for the city. It was very rudimentary. It had basically four maps, a land use map, a street map, a water map, a sewer map, and enough language to describe what was going on on each of the maps. To my knowledge, that was the first one. And that has served as a touchstone for us. There were stands and, and I use the term touchstone because one of the, one of the things that a plan does is not so much layout, we're going to do A, B, C, and D, and so now we set out to go do that, but one of the things it does is it says eventually we would like these things to occur, it may be in the next five years, it may be in the next fifty years, but what you get from a plan is when somebody comes up with an idea and they want to do X, you refer to the plan and say, actually, for that spot, we're planning on Y. And this would prevent that plan from happening in the future, and that's really one of the great values of a plan. So, in 2017, we actually began the process anew for the comprehensive plan. We hired a tool design group, they came to town and did a charade, they did a survey. Was that a visual preference survey, or was it just a?
They did a combination of, I believe it was a nonline survey that they did by the way.
Okay, so, and they got to work on the comprehensive plan. And we got a first draft sometime like last year, and honestly, we were disappointed. And so, we sent it back and said, look, there needs to be a whole lot more to this. And I don't want to put that on tool design group, we bear a good part of the blame because honestly, we tried to work with them. We tried to get this done for less than it typically cost, and we got something that required some work. So, we got another draft back last week, and we didn't know it, it was languishing on someone's desk, tool design group for a while, they thought we had it. So we got it. It's closer, it's a lot more substantial, it is a very good transportation plan, but not so much on the land use plan part of it. So, the fact that we're having this discussion tonight is timely. And I think that perhaps we ought to take a look at the plan anew. And have we gotten any budgeted to do anything with the plan? Have we budgeted any yet?
Yes, within Torrey's professional expenses.
And how much have we budgeted?
I think we asked for fifty thousand.
Okay, okay. So, we're on the right track. We would like to make a few more changes to it, and then we'll get you a draft, and then we should probably have a series of meetings like this, and a series of, and make sure that, you know, I love the turnout tonight, would love to see this kind of turnout in each one of these meetings, because truth is, if we come up with a comprehensive plan and it was just the city council, they did it, it's typically, tends to be the thing that sits on the shelf and collects the dust. And so, I guess what I'm saying is you're invited, come in here, hopefully we'll do more about things. And that's what I kind of hope.
Do you have any questions?
So, in the comprehensive plan, as far as from the city's perspective, Mark or Torrey, I don't know who would answer this.
You can't hear me?
Would that, would that comprehensive plan include a five-year plan, a ten-year plan, et cetera, from every, like, the water department, the street department? I mean, would it include?
Typically, no.
No.
That's a, that's a more grandeur view.
Right.
That's your five thousand, but you're not your, we're doing a thirty thousand.
Right, but you wouldn't, it wouldn't narrow down far enough just to, because my understanding now is we really don't have a plan as far as like replacing major things at the, at the water treatment plant and that kind of stuff, because I know, I know we've talked about it, some about budgeting for that kind of thing. So if we even took it down further?
We could do that.
And each department kind of come up with an idea of where they're looking to go in the next twenty years or whatever, near and far away. I mean, to me, that would be helpful in, in budgeting, you know, and major purchases for us, you know, replacing equipment or fire trucks or whatever that costs millions of dollars. I know other cities budget every year to set money aside for those things. I don't know that we do that, but I mean, in a, in a plan like that, I think it would call for more strategic planning as far as that.
Yeah, and I would put that more of the tactical though. And that's what we do as staff, we know what's coming up. For example, we know that in the next ten years, we're going to need to make an investment at the water plant, and we know that we're going to need a fire truck here in the next couple of years. We know those things, and we work those into budgets when we bring them to you, but I get your point, it would be nice for you to have a view of those things in advance.
And as they come.
And I think we'd exercise those.
Yeah. And I just ask, instead of waiting, say, oh, we'll make sure we need to replace this five million dollar thing, whatever it is, you know, we could kind of be prepared, okay, this is coming in the next five years, we're going to need to know if this is, needs to happen, we need to replace this, or this needs to be rebuilt, or whatever, just from each department, I think that might be a little important.
Okay, I bet that.
My concern is same as Erica's.
Can we, can we, I came here, and I'm sitting up on the front row, can we turn this up? It's the fifth meeting I've been to, and I'm, I mean, I'm the only deaf one in the whole house. I'd like to hear what's going on, and I'd have to listen to the TV after I hear what they're saying.
Can you hear me? It's as loud as it goes, right?
That's good, I can hear you.
So, my opinion of it is the same as Erica's. Now, you know, looking forward as a councilperson certainly sets you apart from looking forward as a citizen. Citizen has immediate concerns usually that concern them. We as councilpeople have to have immediate concerns that concerns the whole city.
So, we do a capital improvement plan that looks out five years. So if I hear you correctly, what you're looking forward is a broader version of that, not just capital improvements, but other capital purchases.
Yeah, this, this particular plan that you speak of right now, as a council member, I've been on the council a year and a half, haven't even seen it yet.
Right.
I didn't even know it existed, not sure until tonight, so.
And honestly, we have a garden to you because it's not big, and we don't want to bring something to you unless it's not.
Well, I will tell you, you know, we're building a lot of parks, and we're building a lot of things for citizens' uses, but what we're not doing is building in monies to take care of those. And if we don't take care of them, it's just like any, anything that you build or you buy, it's going to wear out, it's going to tear up, and then where are we if we're not providing those people to take care of that? Now, I have brought it to the attention about using the inmates to do manual labor. I was told that it was not a good plan. I've since spoken to three different county commissioners, and they all tell me that they use them with fire. They even go out, when these guys get out and they hire them, so, you know, I'm a little bit concerned that we have not investigated that fully and we can get cheaper labor to help us out with the parks.
So on that point, we've been there before, we've actually done it, and not with much success. I think that in the future, we're going to make use of the trustees or retired, no recycling operation, and then the kind of the sidewalks out and using it for the structural concrete streets. But what we have found, an actual practice, is that the trustees just weren't very motivated to actually work, and the amount of energy that went into supervising them was not worth it. And so we're not guessing when we say it didn't work for us, we're speaking from experience.
So, under Sheriff Lewis' title, we try to?
No, but, Sheriff.
Does it come?
Under the five, ten-year plan, I'm assuming that if we do that, we take that capital improvement budget and any other major purchases, and in particular, we're going to need a bond issue and so forth, that would help me look out five years. So where are we standing on our existing bond issues? Where, how many more years will we have left on those? Will we have a new bond issue? We're going to, are we going to be, are we going to need taxes to do it? You know, if our sales taxes could grow rapidly, that would help. If we get some other industries to start paying property taxes, that would help, but it, it would be nice to see that in.
Okay, and we can do that, and now is actually an opportune time to do that, because last year, we started paying, well, capital improvements as we go. And so, instead of issuing a bond every five years, paying the next five-year improvements, we're actually at a point now where these bonds will be coming off, we're going to be paying them, and there will be new opportunities to do other capital things. Case in point, I had a discussion with our fire chief the other day. You know, a couple of our fire chiefs, trucks are getting some miles on them, and I told him, 2023 will be a good opportunity to buy a new truck, because in 2022, we pay off a rather large bond. So I see that, I've got a page in the back of my budget that I put there to be trying to do this. You want to see the same thing, and we'll be happy.
Do a three-point load experiment.
If I had glasses on.
Doug, do you have any plans?
No, that's just, just five or ten-year I like, because like I say, so much of ours is, is dealing with the city and bond issues, and when would we, when would we need those? And so, fire trucks, water treatment plants, et cetera, for the bees.
Not just, not just fire trucks, but it's something, I'm going to have to think about fire stations.
Right.
I anticipate that time will come when we start developing them on the third launch.
Now, the master plan, do what? I didn't hear you. I don't have a glasses order here anymore. The, the strategic plan or the master plan, or whatever you call it, that's, that'll show the future streets are, are proposed at some point, streets lose, so forth, and you know, that, I think that'd be interesting to everyone to get to see, so, good or not good, bad or ugly, I guess.
And I know it's mind-blowing, I think what we're looking at is the vision for the city. When you start signing a plan, like you said, we're going to always do, this is more of a vision of what we want to see five, ten, fifteen years down the road.
So let me ask you, what do you want to see?
I have a list. I want to see retail growth options, and I know that we've looked at that, and we've had stores look at this before, and there are reasons, one of those grocery stores and those kinds of things don't come here, but maybe we can address some of the immediate concerns like aesthetics and code enforcement, we need to concentrate on how our city looks as you're driving through. I want to see the upkeep of the parks and the sidewalks and the things that people notice. I think that's important. Housing, obviously, like Norman mentioned, that's an issue. I'm not saying that I want the city to be involved in housing, I just, we could maybe find some ways to make a way for contractors to easier get that done. And then, continue working on our streets, and I've had lots of people comment about how the street program is, you know, they're really noticing a difference, and they appreciate that program, and I was worried adding, adding money to anybody's bill never goes well, but I think for the most part, we've seen a good support from that.
Yeah, in fact, that was true. We did not get one complaint here at City Hall regarding the five dollars.
Yeah, I think when people can actually see, and I think the signs help that we put out, the provided by the street management program, because I think that's helping when they see that their five dollars is actually doing something, you know, it's, it makes a difference, so. But just like, just like I said, aesthetics and cleaning stuff up, that you, I know personally just grinds on me every time I drive by. And then maybe we've, we've grown this so much, and there's still so many things that we want to do in this area of town, but I want to see southbound growth too, so that it kind of spreads the beauty that we have created down here across the town, so it's, you don't just have to come down here to see all the pretty stuff. You know, I want to see the pretty street lights and the pretty, other places besides just down here, and I think that would encourage more people to want to come in with their business, or want to come in with their housing addition, if we can spread that across town and not just localize down here on the square. I love down here, and I'm proud of it, and I enjoy it. My husband and I, my kids and I, we walk down here all the time, I love it, but I just think it's something that needs to, to spread outward and not just stay down here. So, and also, and I've talked to a couple of local civic organizations a while back, but I think you're familiar with the Texas program to adopt a highway where they pick up the litter and that kind of thing. I think if we could get on with some of our civic groups and let them adopt an area like Kids Kingdom, Civic Park, this certain flower bed, or whatever, and they're responsible for maintaining that, I think when you involve the community more in projects like that, there's more pride to be shown. They're, they're proud of it, people take care of it, they're happy with how it looks, and it may not last forever, but it could be a program where those people could come in and, and take over the heart of that project that, you know, could show some pride.
Number one, I just want to also thank, and I appreciate so much, everyone that has attended tonight, and I appreciate the interest in our city. And I feel like we've done a lot of good things. And with the absence of Mr. Pedro tonight, he wasn't able to be here, I'm now the senior member of the council, and I've seen a lot of things in the eight years that I've served on council, a lot of good things. And I, and I do think it's really important for us to have a plan and for weird things to go, and some of the things Ms. Armstrong mentioned, I know, and Mark can attest to it, that there are things about co-ordinance that since the day that I got on council that has worried me, and I drive down Main Street every day to go to work, and that's just an example, but I think there's still things, and what a lot of our citizens don't realize, and we don't expect you to realize, but sometimes these ordinances don't uphold or don't do the things we think they should do at times when you're trying to control, and we always have to remember, there is the thought of private ownership, and, and we have to balance that so many times when we're deciding what we can and can't do with this property. But, but I know we've talked about that, I know that's something that we've looked forward, I know that looking at the whole town, the whole of the, is important. One thing that hasn't been mentioned here tonight that is looming, and is a great thing looming that is so important in our city, is the acquisition, hopefully, of the mine property. And a lot of people have a lot of ideas where that's concerned, and that particular acquisition could be a game changer for everything to do with Sulfur Springs. And that's something that's really important, that when we do this plan, we're really, really close on finishing that. Am I correct, Mr. Maxwell?
I certainly hope so, yes. You've got one last thing that we're accomplishing, we may even have to work on.
Right.
My, my, my hope is to have closed the meeting.
Okay, and that, that's really important, and, and you know, I read and see what our EDC has been able to accomplish in the last few years, the industry that we're getting in our community, what we have done downtown and other parts of the city, the thing that our sales tax has been healthy, our sales tax has gone up, a lot of us visit a lot of our neighboring communities that are like us as far as size, and I see, you know, the difference. And we're, the city's always getting comments and questions about how did we do this? And I just feel like that we need to be real cognizant of that. We try to be as diligent with your money as we can be, the five-dollar fee, I think, has been, we were in a brand-new CIP budget for, just starting five years for the streets, the major streets, and then adding those streets that we're able to add for the five dollars. Again, Lisa, just, people have heard this, but sometimes, how much that five dollars, how much has that increased the revenue of what we can do with, with street improvement?
The full revenue will be around four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, and that enables us to do how much more?
About twice as much.
About twice as much, okay. And in mileage, that's, I just think that's kind of a figure that a lot of people don't realize.
It'll vary year to year, but I think next year, we're in a five-point-four mile range with the street maintenance.
Okay, but then this is something that people need to remember, how many miles of road do we have within the city of Sulfur Springs?
Ninety-three.
Ninety-three, okay. Ninety-three, all right, let me tie that, just, I think we kind of forget that, because we live here, we're in our small community, we're driving a mile or two to work, and we kind of forget that there's that much roads that we're trying to take care of. So, anyway, that's just one point. But, but I definitely feel like if we need business, a lot of us are in businesses, a lot of us are part of plans, I think it's really important for us to look to the future and look to the full plan, and to listen to our, what our citizens want, and, and to understand and to move forward together, not apart. Thank you.
One of the things, it was talked about was the adopt a program, the volunteerism is something that I've learned about for a long time. I know we, we've had projects in the past that were to be taken care of, or, or a project of a particular group, and then the city now has to take care of it. So, you got to be careful when you're thinking these volunteer things, are they, are they taking care of existing things, or are you creating a potential another, I mean, you know what I'm saying, is, is, but I am aware of that, citizens complained about how one of them looked, and, and the city's now mulling it, but it's, it was not the city's project to begin with, and then it was.
No, I didn't mean no projects, I mean.
No, 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 but I'm just saying, that's something to think about, though, because the city has stepped up and done it, even though it wasn't theirs to start with, so.
One of the things that, that's bothered me since I've been on here is addition, housing additions. I don't, I don't really know what the cause of it is, I don't know if it's a case of people wanting too much for the land, or there's not enough builders in this area, or there's not enough families moving in to take over these houses, but in my neighborhood alone, on, on my one block long street, there's five rent houses, and, and where they were in the past would have been starter homes, and we just don't have those homes. And I had a little personal experience with family members trying to find a house in Sulfur Springs, finding it, which is practically impossible for them to find one that they could get in. And finally- And finally got it done, but it took a while. And it, to me, it probably shouldn't have taken as long as it did, especially because there was no issues. And I would like to see some housing additions like we used to have. Now, if memory serves me correct, Austin Acres and Mini Circle are the last that weren't annexed in, that the Harbord Road addition out there, I can't recall the name of it now, but it was, it was annexed in a few years ago. And then you've got Stonebrider out on Route 11, and it was annexed in not too long ago. So, kind of discount those two, because they started out in the county. And if you drive around the county, they've got additions, little additions off where somebody's, you know, bought fifty acres and put a road on it, and they're building houses out there. And I don't know if it's, like I said, a combination of several things, maybe, are we not being user friendly when it comes to builders?
Well, we have a building code.
Well, I realize that.
And so, are they utilizing the building code out of the county yet?
Yeah, there's no building.
So, that's.
That might be a big challenge.
Big difference.
The other thing is too with our infrastructure, EDC has greened the hill out there, but if you make an idea for sewer or water, it has to extend those services as a major urban, a lot of these areas.
Does the strategic plan address that? Does that show needed water and sewer, or projected water and sewer at some point, lift stations, et cetera? Or existing one, though? We don't have that yet in the, in the new plan. And I need to know, but that will be a part of it, you know, that.
That's, that's just a real concern for a city when, when you've got people coming up to your election and saying, "So, Norm, I really would like to vote for you, but I live in the county."
So, I, this is an opportune time to bring this up. This is a, Mr. Kelly comes to City to two, three times a month to tell me about the, the housing market and how they could sell houses all day long, but there are no houses to sell inside the city, or for that matter, anywhere out of the county. And so, we've been discussing at a staff level what we think we ought to bring to you. And we've toyed around with lots of ideas, but at the heart of it, we have this issue that we're grappling with, and we're, and Tori is actually putting together a presentation to bring to you. We'd hoped to have it at the last meeting, but it's, it's not there yet. But the issue is sustainability. Think about this for a moment. If you put together all of the property tax that's paid in this city, the residential, and if you include the commercial and the industrial, all of that property tax is not enough to pay for police and fire. It falls short. Pay for the police department and half of fire. If you strip out the industrial and commercial, it doesn't even, the bad folks nowhere near. So, over the years, I have been approached many times, "When are you gonna, when are you gonna annex Pleasant Road? When are you gonna annex Rocky Brea?" My answer is always on the twelfth of never, because residential annexation never pays. Especially if you're going into a development where the roads are already substandard, the water lines are already substandard, and there are no sewer lines. Eventually, we'll be putting in the sewer lines, right? So, I will never recommend to you to go out and annex, and I will tell you now, the law has changed and those days are over anyway. So, the question is, okay, if you look at the aerial map of an aerial view of the cities, you see, you see plenty of thirty, forty acre parcels and even bigger where an addition could go. So, if it's, if it's not sustainable to go out and annex one, is it, does it really pay for itself if a developer comes in and puts it in a new subdivision? And the answer is no, it doesn't. But we're in the business of doing a lot of things that don't pay for themselves. Parks are right, it doesn't pay for itself. The library doesn't. The airport's closed. PD doesn't. I mean, we do a lot of things, but we have to be careful, because after a while, there's a critical mass, and we just can't do it anymore. And so, what we look at is, okay, what would be more, a more sustainable alternative? If you look at the same aerial view of the city, you see a lot of what I call onesies and twosies. A lot where you could build a single family home, or two or three lots where you could build single families, or quite a couple of dude places. And in those cases, we're already maintaining the street, we're already maintaining the sewer line, we're already maintaining the water line, and those makes a lot more sense. The problem with those lots is, is right next door is a house that looks terrible, right? Not in all cases, but often. A house is leaning to one side, a house has been vacant for years. And so, to Erica's point, yeah, we need more code enforcement, a lot. And so, what that means is we need more code enforcement officers, because we got the one guy full-time, and he's got more than he can shake a stick at. And so, yeah, we, so that's just what I would call a strategic initiative, something we ought to go out and do, in fact, something that we have been doing. So, Jason Ames has been doing this for, what, two years now? We moved that responsibility to the police department, so that when the code enforcement officer shows up, he shows up in a shirt that says "Police," he's got a badge, and they take him seriously. And my instructions to Jason were, "You start at the center, and you start working out," because we can't hit it all at once. We don't have the manpower, and frankly, if we try to do everything at once, it will fail under its own, under its own weight. It'd be too much, and you'll fill this castle chamber with angry people, quite honestly. And so, we've been focusing on the area that's wet, and if you take, and if you've noticed over the last couple of years, it's been a lot of improvement. Now, he's beginning to focus south and east from here, and we'll see more. But at the rate we're going, oh, yeah, it'll take forever. So, yeah, we need another code enforcement officer. The problem is, we don't have the budget for it. Yeah, I would love to be able to take a better care of the parks. You know, you get, you get, you get the front half of coal in its manicure, you get to the back half, and we see things that we'd rather not see, you know, like there'd be more, load more of. And maybe this piece of equipment better maintained, and, you know, structure better maintained. Honestly, there are lots of things that we would like to do more of and do better. We just don't have the money. And so, that's why I, for one, am so excited about thermal, because I see the potential for revenue production out of the industrial development. And to me, everything that we talk about, about what can be and what should be hinges on whether that happens. And so, that is almost my entire focus these days.
Hey, one, have any comments? Go ahead, Mr. Kelly. Mr. Kelly, before you start, I have to read this.
Yes, sir.
This is the public comment portion of the City of Sulphur Springs City Council meeting during this portion of the agenda. Members of the public may address comments on any subject to the City Council. The Texas Open Meeting Act prohibit any discussion or deliberation by members of the City Council of the subjects raised during public comments. The only response to any item mentioned could include a statement of specific factual information given in response to an inquiry or a recitation of existing policy in response to an inquiry. Any deliberation of or decision can occur only at a properly posted subsequent meeting. Comments are restricted to three minutes per speaker, and all comments and commenters shall be sealed and shall avoid proflame or inflammatory language. Would you state your name and your address?
My name is Tim Kelly. My address is in the North Hopkins area where I live. My wife decided one day that she has some land out there, she's going to build a nice house out there, so I might have to lose some frame before that. And the only thing I would like to talk to you about tonight is some facts. First of all, I would say to the council, to Mr. Maxwell and his associates, we have done an outstanding job for this community, having our, I mean, it's just, it's phenomenal, because as most of you know, I'm really safe in this. Like, there's a lot of things out there at your home that, that. The fact that I want to talk before you get out tonight is what, what is really going on in our community. At present time, most of you know that our only model rate is two point five percent. Identity Einstein, well, well, probably that time is fifteen thousand people. Figure out exactly what, you know, I need to report. But you'll also look at the fact that most of those people that they're talking about are on social security, you know, government programs, or something else. So, therefore, those jobs are not going to be out there. Now, your EDC has done a phenomenal job too, and most of you know that there's a new, there's a new company that's coming into town with three hundred new jobs. Now, the three hundred new jobs, where are we going to find them? Well, more than likely, they're not going to be living in Sulphur Springs, Texas at present time, because they're not here. Okay? How do we solve that problem? Well, there's only one way to handle it, if you want to solve the problem. You're going to have to figure out some way to ensure that people come in and search for us. Now, if that's the case, where are they going to? Somebody mentioned something earlier tonight, I think about some numbers of them. Usually, most of you know, I've been in this area for a number of years. We used to have approximately a hundred, I see, between seventy-five and a hundred and twenty-five house listings in the county and in the city. I lived by county at age of forty-seven. We have approximately one hundred listed agents in Hopkins County in Sulphur Springs. Now, the other side of the coin that you look at is, what are they? Well, we have approximately eight to ten very good builders in this community, but they took one in the front. They're all building custom homes outside the city limits. Now, you say, "Why are they not good?" Well, most of them, at one time or another, they've been in some of these recessions that we're sending high levels, and they didn't burn. They had, about a minimum loss, and they had to eat. So, we're not good at that, but they're good at the other side of the coin. If anybody would kind of look around and see exactly, when you think, you stop and think, what, what is, what is the housing addition, subdivision involved? Land, streets, water, sewer. And if anybody would take you a few numbers and put that together, you've got to have a pretty good background as far as money is concerned. So, you have art, art, you've got to have a new property. So, therefore, that's another reason why I think we don't have very many people for any kind of talent right now. I, for the last two years, have tried to talk to tractors to come to Sulphur Springs, Texas. We had one, the A Horton, that was going about a subdivision, we're talking about Highway eleven, about four or five years ago, when the market went the other way, and so, we backed out. And, but the problem that I see that is concerning to me very much is the fact that we have a community, that we have got businesses, we have food places, we have places all over this community that are out here who, who are looking to try to keep their business running. As a matter of fact, most of you know, we have something in this town, I don't know of many, fifteen thousand population, people that's within eighty miles of Metroplex, has Chick-fil-A. And there's a reason why Chick-fil-A came to Sulphur Springs, because they saw something in our community that they felt like they were willing to invest in. And so, as I said, the thing that, the thing that worries me more than anything that they do is the fact that, and also, EDC has told me that, that I'm sure is true, that they provide us with new industries, that Black comes to Sulphur Springs and hires somewhere from fifty, from ten to fifty. And honestly, we don't have, we don't have a city. But the thing that I, I'm concerned about, I haven't done anything, is the fact that we just do not have any housing, any housing, in order for people to come into Sulphur Springs. And then that's the other reason why we're talking about rental property, but why, why a lot of guys turn into rental property, because, you know, there's nothing out there? And, but most again, as I said, I, I think that we need to be very, very concerned about what is going on in our community and relationship, and especially in the housing. And that's just something that I'd like to throw out to you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Detective Dane, hand your annuals, please.
This is one of the hardest things that you can do, because none of you gave a name, but you gave all the junk that everybody's looking. This is not easy, so I appreciate all of you. I moved to this town, it was a little bit like Lebanon, but I moved here because I love the people. And I've decided to stay here. I could move anywhere, but I stayed here because I love the people. I love their town, I love the growth, I love the direction in this place. And so, to speak to a couple of points, Jim, you were talking about the carriaging cost of the capital improvements. My question to you would be, is there any asset that the city owns and that the city had and no longer has a use for, or is it not as valuable anymore? In my soul, souls, I'm a conservative. I don't believe that the city just grows and keeps growing, and there has to be an asset out there that the city no longer has a use for. To the volunteerism about the parks, it is a wonderful idea. I'm not too sure if sustainability, that they will achieve, but I appreciate your heart is on that. I mean, you did nail that exactly, you responded to that part of the volunteerism. And, Norm, I was present in here when there was a master plan and addition in two thousand and seventeen, and I thought it was a fantastic addition. I mean, I don't have to agree with everything to be on board. What happened in the vision that I was a part of in two thousand and seventeen, about the growth, because there is a limited amount of resources, there's going to be a downtown, and then west, and then south, and then there's going to be a great amount of, I don't know, park. And I absolutely love Mark, thank you, because without you, I don't think we're going to have a chance at the city and in the mind. The mind is absolutely, I think, is going to make, I've already made this place is absolutely a jewel in EDC's. And if the city is mine, and he absolutely does the work that he's dedicated, so I appreciate your attention.
Anyone else?
Me. My name is Carrie Nichols. We live on F seven two two nine seven, just outside of our town. My husband Steve and I own a retail store on the square, on Main Street, everything unique. I'm a renter, I've been for sixteen years. I only say this so that, so that you're aware of how many people I talk to on a daily basis. I even sometimes meet more than. So, everybody knows you really sell a lot, so. But I, I do genuinely say that, so that you have an idea of the, I think, the wide perspective that I bring. My father and I seem also own quite a bit of a very challenging rental property right here around downtown. I would say it's probably some of your lowest income housing. You do what you can with those properties when they're seventy plus years old and you're inheriting them from previous owners. We are also attempting to bring some housing, some new housing in just a few blocks west of here. I would tell you, our biggest challenge and the only reason it may not work is building costs and infrastructure costs. And so, for us to financially be able to sell those homes for what I know a buyer would be willing to pay, and it would of course appraise for, the city. the city, and this is across the board for many years, we all do not put in infrastructure in new areas for a developer, for the most part, is that a correct word? Okay, don't want me to speak too long. That's been my experience. Hamden sits where it sits because the developer would have had to have brought in the water and sewer that Chick-fil-A ended up doing. So that's been my experience for a really long time, and I understand that. What y'all are responsible for and listening, you know, it's not just money just falling out of the sky and going out. Y'all have a huge, huge responsibility. And I, for one, think that you have done an amazing job. For many years, I've been proud, proud, proud to sell it. I would tell you that if you can find a way to provide water and sewer for areas that need development in the city, you will see a change in housing, in developers being willing and able to financially afford to come. Even some small potatoes people. A big company like D.R. Horton starts throwing up hundreds of houses, the people that didn't pay prime premium prices in this last boom are going to be affected. I don't believe they will be able to sell their nineteen seventy-eight three-bedroom rent-rented style homes and brand and fresh paint for the hundred and seventy-five thousand that they paid for because you can go buy a brand new home that looks better and is more energy efficient for that same price. So I think we will actually experience a little bit of a shift if we do get a big developer. We need them, not saying we don't need them. Don't walk out of here and say that Karen and I said that. But I think there's a lot of challenges, and a lot of them are probably more national. I appreciate that y'all are having this discussion. The other thing I'd love to say is, I believe, I know we have a lot of consternation about all of the money and efforts that have been put into downtown versus some south growth and some other cleanup. To me, the south end of town is national growth, it's prime real estate, it's incredibly extensive. It will happen when we get the people here that support the numbers that Starbucks and Chick-fil-A and those type, Kroger, Target, all the people, all the brands that people talk about. But we have to have the people, and that's the housing, which obviously has been at home here a lot. I will say unequivocally, unequivocally, in the last sixteen years, really the last ten, since y'all have done what you've done downtown, that is why people want to live here, and it is actually why we have been considered this jewel, why we've been nominated. You can't sustain what you've done without the hearts and the passion of the people. And so, that's why we're winning. We're winning because of what you've done with the parks and the rest in downtown, but it's sustaining because of the passion and the growth and the hearts of the people. And so, I just applaud all of you for serving and looking to find ways to help make it even better. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Free man? I think it's, I think it's, I guess it's five sixteen, okay. I feel like my wife and I have had a unique perspective on South Springs. My wife and I both graduated from school here, went away. Honestly, he never had a vision that we would move back to South Springs. We had the opportunity to purchase a property here. We started rehabbing, we had a special with that, we bought a property. We all know it's bed breakfast here in town. And we probably see more evidence of why people come to this town. To see, we've had people who have come to this town just on a whim driving through, and you go, "Hey, go check out our downtown." We've had people who have stayed at our bed breakfast, who have moved here at one houses here because of the experiences we've had downtown. My wife and I never would have made the investment that we've made. And kind of did some simple math, we probably already added, I mean, we're not a big money people at all. The properties that we re-had have added over seven hundred and fifty thousand to the tax base because we thought there was opportunity here. And the opportunity has come from the effort that started in the downtown. You know, I've heard the story, hey, start breaking Main Street, and then people go, "Hey, we did that, we're good, we're done." And then it's like, well done, this is the very first step. And I think as long as everyone understands that the work and the passion and that progressiveness that the city council, that city manager has put into this, people are a team. I can't say how many different, people from different cities who have come and stayed at our bed breakfast because they grew South Springs, they want to see what's going on, and they want to learn from it. And we've had people from Tyler, Longview, small towns. We've had some people from deep south Texas, as far as Fall Curious, that have come here because they read about South Springs, they see what happened, and that vision that was out here and that the city council put in place, that the city management put in place, that it drove things to happen. And I think you have to continue to be progressive and build off of that. People will come here, I mean, when the businesses come, people will build the houses. I mean, it's supply and demand makes that happen. And that raises the tax base, and it makes it better for everybody. But you just, I think that the initial direction, and like Dr. Leighton said, the vision that came out of that meeting a couple of years ago, definitely pushed in the right direction, so that's all that.
Thank you. First thing I think, I thought I was talking to you guys for a while. You're not supposed to do that. I gotta talk to you guys. I'm very into it. I've got kind of a unique perspective on the things that they have in the city in the last twenty years. Because I said, when we share it for sixteen years. And before that, along the P and Z, when that plan was done. So I've seen things from a kind of different point of view than most, and for much longer. As far as the dam down, you know, I don't know, years ago, sixteen years ago, maybe seventeen, you could have shot a twelve, you could have shot a man across the square at any time, and not hit anybody. Unless, unless it was a docket, it's all the war in the party. And that's kind of the way it was, you know, it was just kind of embarrassing. And since then, I bragged on our city, period, time to get a chance. When I'm at a dam, I talk to people, and I say, "Kind of South Springs, you mentioned it." And a lot of people with many years, yeah, I love that place. I traveled for seven years, all over the, I worked in construction for seven, in seventeen states. And if you draw a circle around any metropolitan area, as far away as we are, you're not going to find a city that looks as good or does as well as this city with the many resources we have. And we don't live in rich places, our capital is in the gray, it's getting better on the ground. But what has occurred here in the last one year has centered the mark by anybody's hand. The downtown, the financing of it, you know, by my calculations, two, three years ago, this is kind of a horseback, certainly. The city and the counties, with county money on the courthouse, it's done about seven million dollars in bond money, the city and the county money, grant money. And at that time, by my calculations, conversations with people who did investments in the revitalization area, there's been about, sunk itself to thirty million dollars spent in there. That's private, you know, so it's prime to fund. What the public entities did, you're prime to fund, for that time, it's been here. And I talked to this, and they say, downtown is their closure. When they had somebody from out of town, particularly land buyers, I think that name, when they had somebody from downtown, or out of town, sorry, they'd say, "Hey, before you go back to there, before you go to that," I said, "Before you go to South Springs there, boy, get in your airplane, go through downtown, stop at a, have a dinner, cut a coffee or anything on the square," and that's their closure. They say, "Have the people see the downtown, change their view of the whole area." Now, I understand the need for repair, maintenance, to go outside of downtown area. But our downtown is our place. You don't buy a new car or anything else if somebody's missing pretty teeth. And we used to be missing pretty teeth in here. There were holes, where buildings were missing, and it was just, it was a mess. The downtown area has been cured, and there's changes, you know, it's in and out. But the future is bright, and that's the development. Like Mr. Nichols was talking about, there's a development, it stands outside and revitalization in the area, it's like documented, it's spent seven figures down here. That's, and it is a revitalization area, maybe outside it, I don't remember.
It's outside.
Yeah, okay, it's outside, you know, and this was promoted by what happened in downtown. And, you know, we're a small town, we're not the kind of dominant like Detroit, some of the big cities where downtown dies, and everybody goes outside and just not get it from you. As far as the mine, I worked, you know, I did all fifty of us on that system. Because I did, I worked for the city when I was fourteen years old. For two, one thousand and thirteen, fourteen, hundred. But in mine, I worked out there when they did, for to get us there. But, okay, the city, Lewis was talking to the city about Mark Rosen, they were talking to the city about giving us the mine here. Seven thousand foot double drag, and they talked a little long too, I'm gonna hurry it up. Seven thousand foot double drag, three forty-five K dead line, twelve inch rolling top of the line, ten inch gas line, placed on railroad, less than two miles from the interstate highway. I was in the meeting, okay, I was in the meeting from this second. And I said, you know, the Lewis people there, and he said, "We're going to give you this, this, we're documenting this project." And Mark said, "Well, why don't you just give us the whole thing?" And, you know, I got a problem, I didn't believe the VHS set it. And there was, I got a problem, they did. They said, "You know, we actually talked about that," and here we are. Okay, one other thing, and I'll finish it. Jobs, and the gap is at two point five percent. Anything, they tell me, they have three, twenty-three and four, the pink ones are left, or pink ones don't work. And so, that's what we are, we're done. This city, this town, with the continuity of leadership that we've had for these many years as the city, any town, kind of, any town within that circle of metropolitan area, if you get closer to town, it tends to do a little better, you know, I mean, that's just the way they do it. And the gratefulness in there, man, they've got all the blocks to work, so that's out there. But I guess that's all that I can say. If anybody wants to know any history, I have that on the record in the history. Now, thank you for your, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, uh, whoop, sorry. Tom Soder, eighteen twenty-eight, Main Street. So I think this is the first time I've spoke with the city council because of respect for my brother. Sorry, I didn't want to embarrass anybody. Hopefully, I'll be able to do that tonight. We've actually talked about a lot of good things tonight. A lot of different ideas and different points, and that is very helpful. I left this town to go to Congress, then left it for ten years for questionable reasons. I had the opportunity to come back in nineteen eighty-eight. It's a very different place than it was in nineteen eighty-eight. And a lot of reasons that we talked about tonight. In my place, where our office, so you know where our office, I have a beautiful view of downtown. You wouldn't believe the number of people that saw, take pictures, take your kids out, play in the park area, walk around downtown all day. People that have come to our business from out of town, first thing they talk about is our downtown. How beautiful it is, how we're so fortunate. If you leave here and drive anywhere in these segments, if you leave West Texas and drive into the towns of West Texas, South Texas, Central Texas, other than metropolitan areas, I would challenge you to find a downtown that is as beautiful as ours. I would challenge you to find a place that is full of business in downtown. Most places you go, instead of the downtown, is virtually nonexistent. We have great students, we're fortunate to have a great hospital, a lot of places don't have hospitals in. We have a great police department, great fire department, a great city. Those things don't happen in a vacuum. It takes leadership, it takes courage. Many of you talked about tonight, and they promote, I'm in the business. It's a tough discussion, believe me, I've been in it for over thirty years. It's okay, you're spending somebody else's money, but don't spend mine, don't tax me. But yet, we all want a beautiful town, we want beautiful parks, we want, we want good roads, good infrastructure. And I applaud you for being courageous with the five dollar fee and looking for other areas. You don't have those things without investment. And those investments turn into dollars. They're what our future is about. I don't want our kids to study here. I don't want them to have to go somewhere else, but that takes a lot of investment. It also takes a lot of leadership. I caution you, we have not had turmoil in the city. People can disagree, or often disagree. I'm not always correct, everything's been done in the city. But when you step back and look at the big picture, we're a better place now. I don't want to lose that. I want that to change. That's important for us. So I encourage you, thank you for your service. It's a bank of a job, I know. Everybody has their opinion. But we need you, and we need you to think for all of us. And don't make a decision that will hurt us in the long term. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Junior Valier, seventeen twenty-one, Redham Circle of South Springs. I just simply want to say, we have heard here in the city from people with experience, restaurant owner, what chain it is, what menu it carries, they can use the same, we can use the same, cook the thing at the same amount of time. And you're going to get a different taste every time because there is no restaurant that will be any better than the cooks who live in the area around that restaurant. We are blessed in this city to have people with great experience. We are blessed in this city to have some creative minds. And I think we need to recognize that as we draw from whatever plan we begin to work out for the city, that we draw from not only the experience of those who have gone before.
out for the city, that we draw from not only the experience of those who have gone before, and not only from the present structure that we are dealing with, but to look to the creative minds that we have in this community, and please draw for those creative minds, those people who bring dreams and see what this community can be, there are people who are living in this community who have those dreams of what that life of see this community to be. Some of them have it right here, and some of them have, period, it's just a gun regret. We need to draw for those creative minds and use those people as best we can. I love this city, I grew up in the county, I was gone for eighteen years, coming back to the city, and I'm stuck here. So I'm asking you, and I'm begging you, please, use the experience that we have that has gone before, and seek out those creative minds that we have. They may have something not just outside of the box, they may be coloring the box at all, and we need to draw on those creative minds.
My name is Jay Williams, seventeen twenty-five, alongside Lane, and I would just like to say that I know, and I appreciate the city council putting on this vision workshop this evening, and I know in my heart that y'all can work this out, you can create a vision and be executed upon, and I know we can rely on the manager, Matt Swell, to execute that with the stalwart champion that he's been for our city, and the experience he's got, I know he can do it. I would say that a vision, without the funds to finance that vision, is the vision of all.
All right, so I would, I want to start by thanking council members Sanders and Armstrong. It was them who wanted to have this meeting tonight to discuss vision, and from a personal perspective, I've got to tell you, I'm very, very excited about it. I'm excited that you want to better define our vision, I'm excited that you already have ideas, think that you would like to do, I'm excited that you want to get granular when you look at this, and as I look at the things that you have discussed on my list here tonight, I'm excited because it's the same things we talk about on the staff level, it's the things that we recognize and the things we think, how do we wrestle with this? And I'm excited because we're entering a period for the next ten years, we're actually going to be able to do these things. I've been here twenty-four years, and I've seen a lot of difficult things come and go, and a lot of exciting initiatives, and I got to tell you, I'm, I see the next ten years as the most exciting period, at least since I've been here, because we're going to be able to start tackling these things. So what I would like to do on the future of council agendas, you've seen the council agendas, you know the rhythm, some of them go fairly quick, a lot of second readings, and some of them we dig into it. I would like to have a standing item on the agendas called Vision, and I would like to start discussing some of these issues, and we will start working the consensus into the plan. And what I want to do is get together with the mayor ahead of time, and start putting together a forward-looking list of each of the items that, that we can discuss, and he's already talked to me about some things that he'd like to see us discuss on future agendas, and so, I want to put together that list. I would encourage you to visit with your mayor, tell him what you'd like to see coming up, and we'll start working on that, and I look forward to what's coming. Thank you.
All right. We are adjourned at seven seventeen.